to the May 16 Campbell City Council meeting. We're getting some feedback on. Could we get roll call please?
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Scazzola.
Here.
Councilmember Fratato.
Here.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Here.
Mayor Bybee.
Present. At this time, I'd like to invite Agent Martin Rivera from the Campbell Police Department to lead the Pledge of Allegiance in on behalf of the Campbell Police Department in recognition of May 14 through the 20th as National Police Week.
Pledge of Allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Marty and we'll be having you up in another few minutes on the consent calendar when another item comes forward on your retirement. At this time, I'd like to proclaim the week of May 21st through the 27th, 2023 as National Public Works Week and I'd like to invite our Public Works Director to accept the proclamation. And I'd like to read a couple of things about Public Works Week, which I think is important and to let our community know. This year marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. This year's theme is connecting the world through public works. And it's important to know that or our citizens to know that our staff works diligently to keep the city streets, parks and other public facilities in a safe and well-maintained condition that thus helping maintain a sense of civic pride and positive morale. Additionally, staff continues to design, manage and implement projects that provide value to the community, a more sustainable environment and improvement to the overall quality of life in Campbell. The Public Works Staff does an excellent job both at the engineering department as well as the yard and we're really lucky to have a dedicated staff that we do. If any other council members would like to make some comments, Council Vice Mayor Landry.
Hi Todd, how you doing? Thank you so much and thank you to all the people that work under you. I know sometimes I give you grief, but then overall you do a great job and I totally appreciate everything that you guys do. Our community appreciates everything.
Councilmember Fratato.
I'd like to add my comments and thank you and thank the members of your staff who have been, many of whom have been with the city for many, many years and have always done an excellent job and very much appreciate the work they do. It's oftentimes unseen, but nevertheless, it's noted. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez.
And likewise, I think it often is unseen, but I hope you know it doesn't go unappreciated. Just last week, I was meeting with with some residents and they mentioned how excited they were that their their neighborhood was one of the next ones to be paved and so the impact is felt by our residents and so I want to thank you and your team for all the service and dedication.
And Councilmember Scazzola.
Yeah, just want to echo everyone's comments of course and I really am one that believes that public works makes the world go round truly. And you know, I don't get very many complaints, I get zero actually. I have not heard one yet about there's a pothole on my street that needs to get filled in immediately, nothing so far, so so far so good. You guys do a great job.
And I'd also like to recognize Amy Olay, our city engineer, who's at attendance for your dedication and support of our city as well. And I'll come down and present this to you Todd and then you can have the floor.
I really do appreciate the comments. I would like to thank the mayor and the council for all the all your nice words and 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 beyond the nice words, just taking the time to recognize all the hard work of the staff. As as has been said, a lot of what happens with public works, whether it's engineering or maintenance or inspection is kind of work that happens, I wouldn't say, I want to say behind the scenes, but it's not really behind the scenes, it's prominent work, but it's the type of work that people only notice when something goes wrong, right? They don't often appreciate a newly paved road as as much as I or perhaps Amy would or a brand new playground. So it's it's really nice to hear those words and we do appreciate all of the comments. And and I would also like to add on to that, that I am in a very, very fortunate position to work with a great group of of men and women in the Public Works Department who do a wonderful job in maintaining the streets, parks, facilities, traffic signals, fleet, everything we have out there that the public uses and also with the engineering side that 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 reviews projects, both public projects and private projects and ensures that they are are completed in a timely and in a quality manner. And not to mention all of our environmental programs as well, that now we're taking an increased role in. And with all that being said, I would also, I think it's also worth noting that we've worked with some very important partner agencies as well. So I'd also like to recognize the West Valley Clean Water Program, the West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority and the West Valley Sanitation District because it's it's really a team of public works professionals that helps make Campbell a better place. Thank you for everything.
Thank you Todd. The next item is communications and petitions and I'll ask the city attorney to report out on the executive session that was held prior to this meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the executive session, the city council authorized the city to defend former council members Gibbons and Resnikov in the closed session matter, which is FBPC case number And that was by unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you Bill. Next item is oral requests. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council are requested but not required to complete a speaker's card. Speakers are limited to two minutes. The law generally prohibits the council from discussion or taking action on such items. However, the council may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral request. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on the item, not on any item not on the tonight's agenda that's in the council chamber? And do we have anybody online? Do we have one person online?
Veronica, good rehearse.
Yes, can I be heard?
Yes, you have two minutes Veronica.
Perfect and thank you. I'm here as a member of Campbell, California, as well as a representative from Campbell City Supply Inc., here to be an educational force to really reiterate and bring home the importance of having accessible, safe and legal medical-grade marijuana in Campbell, California. As a person who was a medical patient since I've been 17, it was not accessible for me in San Jose at that time, so I had to take measures into my own hands and get away over to Santa Cruz in order to access things that helped with my anxiety, chronic pain, as well as inflammation in my joints. I've been a patient of early onset arthritis since I was a kid and I found that through this medicine and through, of course, many other things in addition to, having this as a tool in my tool belt was a great way to help me find a lot more of my sanity by helping myself get into a different head state to find those different pathways for myself as well as find the educational components of really the what does what that we're able to find now since the 2018 Farm Bill has been passed, allowing that hemp research, everything else but THC, the psychoactive component, is able to be researched and broken down into saying, hey, this one can help to relieve pain as well as reduce the effect of seizures, which could be CBN. And with CBG as the like most complex one that opens up more receptors, that other things may be more effective. The science is starting to back this up now that we're able to have these medicinal researches be accessible to people. And I'd like to further bring home the point that having this here in Campbell would be so much more beneficial to the community, to the economic growth, as well as the just the betterment of society, to say that there's so much more to cannabis than just getting high. And I'd like the council to recognize that as well as understand that there's so much more to the drug than there is that's been addressed in most like pop media and so much of propagandas and things as such.
Thank you for your comments Veronica. Anybody else? Great. So I'll move on to council announcements and I have a few this evening. Be sure to visit the 45th Annual Boogie Music Festival in downtown Campbell this weekend, Saturday, May 20th and Sunday, May 21st. There will be four stages of live music from all genres by the best local bands, a kids song with activities, arts and crafts booths and a variety of great food, beer and wine. For additional information, please visit campbellchamber.net. Join the Campbell Veterans Memorial Foundation in honoring the men and women who have died while serving in the United States military on Monday, May 29th, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM at the Orchard City Green located here at City Hall. Back-to-school museum field trips are open for reservations. The Campbell Historical Museum and Ainsley House are available for school trips. Programs are designed to complement study units for second and third grade students. Activities invite students to engage in experiential learning as they rotate through exhibit stations and toward the Ainsley House. To find out more, please visit campbellca.gov. Event tickets are available for the Ainsley House Spring Garden Concerts on Sunday, June 18th. Campbell welcomes Ren Geisic, a singer-songwriter from Los Gatos. Enjoy elements of jazz, blues, country and soul. Ren delivers a heartfelt performance of original music and reimagined classics. To purchase tickets or to find out more about other concert events, please visit campbellmuseums.com. And finally, city offices will be closed for business Monday, May 29th in observance of Memorial Day. Police and emergency services will remain open. We'll move on to the consent calendar, which is items 2 through 16. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a request is made by a member of the city council, city staff or a member of the public. Any person wishing to speak on any item on the consent calendar should ask to have the item removed from the consent calendar prior to the time the council votes to approve. If removed, the item will be discussed in the order in which it appears. Are there any council member staff or members of the public that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Okay. I would like to pull items 17 and 18. And I'd also like to report a no vote on on 16, on item 16, on the second resolution on the promissory note, I'm reporting a no vote on that. Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak on any item? I don't see any hands. So with that, could we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve items 2 through 16, and also include some desk items for number 14.
One second.
So. Desk item for 13 also.
Oh, there's also a desk item on 13. So there's a motion by Vice Mayor Landry and a second by Councilmember Lopez to approve the consent calendar items 2 through 16 with a desk item on items 13 and 14.
Councilmember Lopez. Councilmember Scazzola. Councilmember Fratato. Vice Mayor Landry. Mayor Bybee.
Aye. Thank you. So I pulled items 16 and 17 and 18 in recognition of two of our police officers who are retiring. We've met Marty, Agent Rivera, I call him Marty because we go back a long ways. I hope that's okay Marty. And I want to say a few words about Marty first. He has been employed by the Campbell Police Department for over 26 years of service and he served in many capacities during that time, both as an officer and an agent. Just to highlight a few, he was assigned as a field training officer, a task force agent, patrol watch commander, sexual assault, a detective, a traffic supervisor and a member of the SWAT team for over 12 years. And he's been a real asset to our city. And he's going to be missed for his service and his experience and loyalty to the city. The other officer that who's not able to be here tonight is Officer James Cooper, who has served with the city for seven years. He worked at the Hillsborough and San Jose Police Departments prior to coming to Campbell. And during his tenure here, he served as patrol officer, field training officer, bike patrol team member and financial crimes detective. And likewise, although he's has served less years than Marty, he still is an asset to the community and we were lucky, lucky to have an officer of his caliber to work in our city. And with that, I'd like to invite Chief Berg up to say a few words and then we'll open it up to council for discussion.
Thank you very much Mayor Bybee for allowing me the opportunity and for recognizing these two great officers and the contributions that they've made to our police department over a number of years. What many of you probably don't know about Marty, when you look over at him, 26 years ago, he was deep undercover at a local high school. A lot has changed since then for all of us. But from the very beginning, Marty has has contributed a great deal to our department and he's really been an asset to to mentoring our younger officers, to helping us navigate some technological challenges and changes over the last several years. And he's one to never shy away from from new responsibilities and tasks and fill in where there's need within the department. So for that, I'm extremely grateful to him and also Officer Cooper, while not here quite as long as Marty, contributed quite a bit and we're very grateful for both of their service. And once again, I'm very appreciative of you taking the opportunity to recognize both of them this evening.
Thank you Chief. And are there comments from the council? Councilmember Fratato?
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to recognize and thank both officers. I've known Agent Rivera for many years when I was on the council before and before that when I was part of the Civic Improvement Commission. So I wanted to thank you Marty for the years of service and dedication to your work as well as to the city of Campbell. Likewise, my best wishes to Officer Cooper as he retires too. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Yes, thank you. Although we haven't interacted in person, other than I got to meet you tonight, I do appreciate all the years of service that you've contributed and good luck on your next move out of state and the city. Look forward to getting the certificate, I think. Yes.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yeah, I'm deeply grateful to both officers, but want to thank you and I'm sorry I haven't had as much of an opportunity to interact, but 26 years is really remarkable. And I want to just in particular, thank you for your work on sexual assault detective. That's really important work and you know, for for residents at their most vulnerable. So to provide that kind of service and dedication, I know it's not, it's not easy, the work is easy, but it's deeply appreciated and impactful, so thank you.
And Councilmember Scazzola.
Yeah, nearly three decades, that's amazing. First of all, I'm right here in Campbell, very much appreciate it. And I gotta say, I am really impressed with the variety of work you did within the department as well. So thank you very much for all of your service.
And with that, could I have a motion to approve items 17 and 18?
Second.
So we have a motion by Vice Mayor Landry and a second by Councilmember Lopez to approve a resolution commending Officer James Cooper and a resolution commending Agent Martin Rivera.
Councilmember Lopez. Councilmember Scazzola. Councilmember Fratato. Vice Mayor Landry. Mayor Bybee.
Aye. And Marty, I don't know, would you like to say a few words? And introduce your wife? On the
There we go. My wife Nicole, who's put up with phone calls late at night and where are you going at 2:00 in the morning and things like that. I'd really like to recognize and thank the council for the kind words tonight. It's been quite a long ride here at the city. It's been fun, it's been challenging. I've made a lot of friends, not only within the department, but through every department and division in the city. So I have lifelong friends, people I keep in touch with. Thank you very much. If you guys are ever out in Nashville area, I'll show you where to go. Thank you.
Great, thank you and congratulations and we'll get the resolutions, resolution to you when it's prepared. So we'll move on to public hearings and introduction of ordinances. Members of the public may be allotted up to two minutes to comment on any public hearing item. Applicants or appellantants and their representatives may be allotted up to a total of five minutes for opening statements and up to a total of three minutes maximum for closing statements. Items requested, recommended for continuance are subject to councils' consent at the meeting. Are there any council members who any have any disclosures to make in regards to the public hearing items? So with that, I'll move to item 19, which is a public hearing to consider the request of Lawrence Construction Incorporated on behalf of David M. Folks Trustee for a zoning exception to allow an approximately 666 square foot expansion inclusive of a 557 square foot garage addition and a 109 square foot living area addition of an existing accessory dwelling unit, carriage house previously approved by conditional use permit UP 96-04 on a landmark property listed on the Campbell Historic Resource Inventory, commonly known as Littleton Martin House located at 1690 Littleton Place in the R19H Single Family Residential History in the R one nine H single-family residential historic overlay combining zoning district, including exceedance of the maximum allowable size for an accessory dwelling unit, an exception to the expansion prohibition for legal non-conforming structures and exceptions to the special provisions for accessory dwelling units located on historic properties. I don't know if you can make those titles any longer, Daniel, but presenting is Daniel Fanner, our senior planner.
Good evening. I think you met him there. Apologies for the link to the project description. So this is an application for a zoning exception for property located at sixteen ninety Littleton Place. This is the site of the Littleton Martin House, which is a city landmark located at Littleton Place, which is located east of Harried Avenue in the city Santa Moss area in the R one nine H zoning district. Here on the right, we do see a photograph of the landmark structure. The city council designated the structure as a city landmark in nineteen ninety-one. And then in nineteen ninety-two, the city council approved a subdivision of the historic estate, which separated the landmark residence from two other structures on the property, including what is commonly known as the carriage house and a barn structure. And then in nineteen ninety-six, the planning commissioner approved a conditional use permit that actually allowed relocation of the carriage house onto the new smaller parcel that houses the landmark property and effectively allowed its conversion to an E D U. So the application before you would allow six hundred and sixty-six square foot expansion of the existing carriage house. Now you see that right here at the rear of the building, that would mostly accommodate a new garage, five hundred and fifty-seven square feet, and then a minor addition of living area of just over a hundred square feet. Now, there are no proposed changes to the landmark structure itself. The other changes would include a paving of a new driveway down the middle of the site. So just quick background on why the zoning exception is being requested here. So as an A D U, the carriage house is actually now legal non-conforming for two reasons. In two thousand and sixteen, when the city adopted its current E D U ordinance, the maximum size of an A D U was established of twelve hundred square feet. Now, the structure currently exceeds that. And then in two thousand and eighteen, when we updated the ordinance again, city adopted some standards for historic properties, which the structure also does not comply with. So as a result, it is a non-conforming structure. It's grandfathered in. It's legal, but it can't normally be expanded. So the requested exceptions will allow the expansion of a non-conforming structure and then allow a minor exceedance of the maximum allowable size for the A D U. And just something to note that the setbacks that are proposed for the structure do exceed the four-foot E D U statewide maximum, so the setbacks themselves are not in question as part of the request. So overall, this couple review of a zoning exception is to really provide a degree of flexibility to minimize the impact of historic character of an historic property, recognizing that historic properties often do have unusual side conditions that may require some flexibility. So to that end, the findings really speak to maintaining the historic character of the property while not adversely impacting the neighborhood or the structure itself, and really try to make sure you're consistent with the general plan and that the change is a minimal departure from zoning code. So in this particular case, we do have a very unusual situation. Fundamentally, the goal of the project is for the applicant to primarily add a garage. So the staff question for us was, to what extent can a garage be reasonably placed somewhere else in a manner that is conforming with all applicable zoning standards? So looking at different options here, the house is basically inverse. So the front of the house faces inward, but still technically, this is the front, even though it's kind of the back. So because of that, you cannot build a garage here because detached structures need to be in the rear half of the lot, and they also cannot be in front of the structure. So these two locations at the front towards the street are not permitted. There is a large easement that runs down the middle that recruits a structure shown right here on the purple area. There's also a large tree at the corner down the right, which wouldn't allow garage. And then additionally, trying to place a garage basically at the front of the house would block the view of historic resource, which arguably would be inconsistent with the Secretary of Interior guidelines for treatment of historic resources. That all basically leads to a conclusion that the only reasonable place to place the garage is attached to the carriage house structure. And so for those reasons, both the historic preservation board and the planning commission board did recommend that the city council take an action to adopt a resolution to approve the applicant's requested zoning exception. And with that, I'll take any questions the council may have.
Vice Mayor Landry.
I noticed that about the nine tree removal, that four of them are Tree of Heaven. Don't we have that listed as like the most noxious, evasive tree that why you make the point of taking those out? It's such a terrible tree.
It's just a reference in the staff report. None of the trees are protected, so there is not a tree removal permit, which is really for disclosure.
But we don't have that tree specifically on the list anywhere that says, take them out?
No, the only tree that meets that criteria is the eucalyptus trees.
Okay, something to think about in this future.
Any other questions of council? Councilmember Lopez?
I just wanted to follow up on something that sounds like it came up during the historic preservation board meeting. Why, why was that the body that was brought to you if the carriage house is not part of the historic designation?
So the code has a bit of a lack of detail when it comes to the actual review process of a zoning exception. It simply indicates that the decision rests with the city council, but we did believe because the property is a registered landmark property that it would be appropriate for both the H B B and the planning commission to provide recommendations. Okay.
Any other questions? So I will now open the public hearing and invite the applicant or his representative to speak in your allowed five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you. My name is Mike Folks, and I'm the property owner. This has been a labor of awesome. You know this property. It needed an earthquake. It came off its foundation and came back down. Basically, it was abandoned. We've been working on it for almost twelve years now, pretty much full-time. The electrical, it had no electrical that worked. It supposedly had plumbing and heating, but those really weren't there. Anyway, we've taken care of the main structure, and now we're working on the carriage house. The, the goal really for me on this project is to unify the property and keep that historic character. I have two historic vehicles that I've inherited from deceased relatives that I now have to keep an hour and a half away from here because I don't have a garage. So the goal of the garage is really for two specific vehicles that will barely fit in there, but they're, they're very large, a sixty-six Chrysler three hundred, which is twenty-foot-long car. But we've, again, tried to, to keep the project as far away from neighbors as possible. And then the two additional things, my mother lives in the house. She's had a massive stroke on her property and can't go upstairs anymore, so she has no closet. So we have a closet for her off her bedroom so she can actually put her stuff away. And we have a small bathroom because with this garage, she's losing access to her bathroom. So when she's in the garden, it's quite a long way to get to a bathroom, and so that's why the bathroom's there. So that's just what the other pieces of the, of the project.
Vice Mayor Landry, can I ask the applicant? I was wondering why it said pool back, pool hat or a pool bathroom on there? So it's the bathroom for your mother to get in from the garden.
Yeah, so.
I was like, where's the pool?
Yeah, there's, yes, there's, so there's been three phases, and basically the phases will go until I run out of money, which will probably happen on this project. But ideally, once the two historic structures are fully restored, painting, new roofs, et cetera, which we've done for the main house, which was, which was a bear, we'd like to work on the garden. Right now, you could park forty cars there. It's all paved. And so the goal would be to return a lot of that to landscaping, really kind of screed it off from the neighbors, open up the backyard so you can see the house, because in the place you can see it from the backyard, and ideally, put in a small pool. Well, if that happens, we'll see. That's, this is, that's phase like five, but yeah, so.
What are the cars?
So it's a sixty-six Chrysler three hundred convertible. It's my grandmother's, and an eighty-five Toyota Land Cruiser, which is my father's.
Oh, wow. Cool. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other members of the public in the chamber that wish to speak on this item? And I don't see anybody online. So with that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion and/or motion. Vice Mayor Landry.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just say from reading all the materials and the applicant's statement and everything included as part of the hearings, it's, it's very clear that there's deep love for the historical nature of the property. And if anything, it sounds like this variance would at least maintain, if not improve, the historic aspect. So I gladly support the motion.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Landry.
Yeah, I want to say this is probably one of the best projects that I've seen come forward from, from maintaining the historic character and nature and structure to very complimentary new architecture. It's not newness, showing the look, but that you're adding this new architecture. And I think it's absolutely wonderful. I've spoken to you over the years. I know you're passionate in twelve years to get this house up to speed. So it's really people like you that deserve our historic nature of Campbell, and it's greatly appreciated.
Councilmember Fratato.
And likewise, I'd like to echo the comments of my fellow council members. And I know you've put a lot of time and a lot of effort and a lot of money into this project to actually restore it so that it really is preserved as a historic house. And so I heartily support this motion and proposal that's before us.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Planning Commission Historic Preservation Board recommends that the city council adopt a resolution approving a zoning exception to allow an approximately six hundred and sixty-six square feet expansion of an existing accessory dwelling unit referred to as the carriage house.
Second.
Great. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Landry and a second by Councilmember Scizola to approve the staff recommendation. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Councilmember Scizola.
Hi.
Councilmember Fratato. Vice Mayor Landry.
Oh, hard. Yes.
Mayor Bybee.
Hi. Thank you very much. Next item is twenty, introduction of ordinance, amending five point five oh of the Campbell Municipal Code regarding special events permits and introduction of city park special event policy. And our presenter is Recreation and Community Services Director Natasha Bissel.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of council. Tonight, I'm bringing before you an introduction of a new city administrative policy titled City Park Special Events as well as adopting also the first reading of a potential amendment to our city municipal code five point five zero special event permits. So to begin, we're bringing this forward tonight with this new administrative policy to help address some ongoing issues and requests for people wanting to host a special event in the city of Campbell that's not located in the downtown area. The city's existing downtown special event policy has a lot of really good guidance, but does not address any other location. Our park field athletic field use policy covers all of our fields and our hourly rentals of our fields. And when you get to groups over a hundred and special events, it refers you back to the downtown special event policy. So we're in an ongoing loop of trying to manage groups of over a hundred who want to utilize our parks. So we use a lot of that information that's listed in that policy to address those issues and apply them at Campbell Park. Oftentimes, a lot of the requests that we have are associated with fundrains and fundraisers, and they utilize the Los Gatos Creek Trail as well. So we've been managing that way for quite some time, and we have kind of looked at this as an opportunity to better meet our needs and also better meet the needs of our community. And it leaves a lot up for interpretation and for staff to kind of guess on exactly how to move forward if we don't have clear guidelines. So the goal of the evening tonight is to adopt administrative policy that was included in your packet. It's a comprehensive document outlining the rules and regulations for large events at specified parks within Campbell. And we've worked collaboratively with the Public Works Department and the Police Department to kind of identify locations that will work best. Anytime a special event permit comes in through the Recreation Department, it's routed through those other departments for approval as well. So we worked with those departments to make sure everything we put into this would work out. And a lot of the information that we pulled and put in there was already really listed in the downtown special event policy. So since the impacts will be in our city parks, we also brought this policy to our Parks and Recreation Commission on February first, and they did vote to bring it forward to city council for, for approval and review. If council's in favor of adding this new administrative policy, we are going to need an amendment to the municipal code five point five zero special events permits. And will, tonight would be the first reading of that ordinance change. The changes within that ordinance include adding parks to the definition so that it wasn't solely to the public right of way. In section five point five zero twenty twenty, permit required. In this section, it also outlined what was prohibited in city parks because it was very clear in public right of way. And then another section, we added language to identify that any permits for special events in the downtown district go through the Police Department and require city council approval, while permits in city parks go through the Recreation and Community Services Department and do not require city council approval. So tonight, staff is bringing before you a request to approve a new city administrative policy. And if you're on board with that, we're going to need an adoption of the ordinance amendment as well. And that concludes my presentation for tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Natasha. Any questions of the council? Vice Mayor Landry.
Natasha. You referenced five point five zero point oh two oh permit required prohibited activities. The first A says the added is which will impede the normal flow of traffic? Is that a vehicular traffic or pedestrian traffic?
To be honest with you, I think, and maybe the city attorney can jump in, that was part of his edits, and I think it was just language update to an existing issue. So in five point, let me see.
Five point five oh point oh two oh.
Yeah. Yeah, so in item A.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think it was just some language update that the city attorney has suggested. It was not relevant to the changes I was bringing forward tonight. So it's just some cleaning up of the language.
Okay, so maybe it's to bill, is it pedestrian traffic or vehicular traffic or both?
It would be both depending upon what the normal traffic is. If we're in the middle of the street, we'd be talking normally vehicular traffic. If it's on the public sidewalk, we'd be talking pedestrian traffic. On the crosswalk, pedestrian traffic.
I just, the reason I'm highlighting is we're not saying maintain a path of travel. And that's why I wanted to know, it basically says normal flow, but it doesn't say anything about maintaining the path of travel. And I've seen events where like there's nowhere left for a person to walk through, so that's why I wanted to ask specifically about that.
Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Natasha. What was the, thinking of the recommendation to get rid of the distinction for nonprofits?
Quite honestly, we don't generally get for-profit people coming. The impacts are pretty significant on the turf when you have over a hundred people. And post-COVID, there's a lot of giving nature, and so we're seeing that our events are growing in size and just the cost of things that are going up. So what we did is we kind of took the nonprofit and the for-profit and found a middle ground. And, and the other reason is, is when someone comes, they may or may not be associated with a nonprofit group, and so then they look for someone to underwrite it, and it's just easier, you know, to kind of say, if you'd like to host a special event, whether you're a political figure or you're a nonprofit group or you want to have an oversized party, we have guidelines to do it, and here's the permit fees associated with those impacts.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Scizola.
So ultimately, in a nutshell, if my understanding correctly, we're going to have more opportunities for more locations, and that would also be more income for the city.
Yeah, it provides an opportunity for us to not say no quite as frequently. We get a lot of requests for hosting festivals at the community center, and it's pretty much a standard no right now because we have no guidance to really provide the framework for that. And this provides the framework, and the community center creates a lot of issues outside of that because we have rental clients who have paid for building use and need parking. And so if we're utilizing and having a large event, it's more than just hosting it at our site. So we have to take those things into consideration, but it does allow us ways to give them other locations and set them on a path to be successful.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Scott. Okay, thank you, Natasha. So at this point, I'll open it up for public comment. Is there anyone in the chamber that wishes to speak? And anyone online? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion and a motion. Any?
Yeah, just just a comment. I just want to say, thank you for the work. I think this is really much needed. I was initially nervous about the, I didn't want to, I was leaning towards not wanting to get rid of the distinction for nonprofits and still to have that discount. But I I think now I support the staff recommendation, hearing the reasoning for it. I I'm not surprised that we mostly, if not only, get nonprofit applicants. That definitely lines up, which is my anecdotal experience. And I'm glad that we're at least taking kind of a moderate step between the two. My my comment is just I I don't want to see that get too expensive and just be mindful of the community groups that 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 host these great events.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Landry.
Yeah, you heard me reference the five point five zero point oh two oh. And I'm going to bring it back to our priorities that we have about inclusiveness. And I would like to add in there will which will impede the normal flow of traffic. Palmer accessible path to travel. Palmer requires the closure of the public street. It goes to our priorities that we set up for inclusiveness.
I just want to make sure I understood what you said. So basically, what you're saying is that even if there is an event that's approved, there still needs to be a pathway for traffic to kind of pass through what would normally be a totally closed out there. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, and accessible, you know, people push their chairs out and then you can't walk down the sidewalk. And that's why I wanted to clarify what traffic meant. So I would like to add that to the line that I just read.
So would it be simpler to to simplify it? Could we just say pedestrian and or vehicle access?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're sidebaring here a little bit because this section is talking about the restriction on people conducting activity without first getting a permit. I think the the issue is, once they have a permit, we want to keep them from impeding traffic, including accessibility. And that may be in the conditions of the permit, maybe not best in this section. And that's what we were just discussing. Let the city attorney discredit me here if I'm incorrect.
I I I think you stated that very well. I I I think the the question would be back to the intent of the motion. If it if it is simply to make sure that there's a condition once a permit is obtained to have an accessible path of travel. That is something that would normally be in the conditions of approval and not something that really would be appropriate in this particular section, which is just setting forth the criteria for when you need to get a permit. If you wanted to include your language as a as one of the condition or as one of the things that triggers the need for a permit, then your your amendments would be appropriate.
Okay, so that's not the correct section is what you're telling me. So where would you put that in there? I didn't read it anywhere in what I read.
Right. Normally, that kind of detail would be a condition that would be applied once somebody comes in for a permit. It would be one of the conditions on the permit itself, not in the ordinance.
Wouldn't it be an overall condition on all permits then?
Those are your points, Natasha.
Thank you, Brian, for catching that in that section. So that section is very specific about what you can't do if you don't have a permit to address your concerns about accessible pathway. When they're submitting an application for an event, whether it's in the downtown district or at one of the site locations, they're required to submit a layout of the event and how it'll be set up, the flow of traffic, managing crowd management is an entire section within that. And so those accessible pathways are a part of that inclusiveness that we're dealing with during the pre-event meeting when they do site walkthroughs and understanding how they plan to set up. And so that would be addressed at that time.
So is that something that they're being made aware of ahead of time? Or does it need to be? Like, you're trying to make this easier for people. So is it something you could put in there?
And I don't I don't think it's always addressed. I think even, you know, when you have the boogie downtown, they're talking about pathways and ways to get through part of their setup and layout. It's it's part of the conversation as the person managing the property or the downtown street to understand the egress ingress stuff of kind of of the flow of traffic. And so it's not, I don't, it's it's something we just do naturally. I don't know if it necessarily has to be in writing. It's part of that layout. And if we're noticing things that don't work properly or don't that impede that flow, we we require them to make changes.
Great. Councilmember Lopez, nothing. Any other, Councilmember Scazola?
I just want to make a comment. I'm I'm really excited about this, actually, just an opportunity to have more people have more special events here and also the income factor again.
Thank you. Any other comments or all entertain a motion? Councilmembers Scazola.
I'd like to make a motion that the city council introduce and hold first reading of an ordinance amending chapter five point five oh of the Campbell Municipal Code and adopt the resolution approving a new administrative policy titled City Park Special Event Policy.
I'm seconded.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Scazola, second by Councilmember Furtado to approve the staff recommendation. I have a roll call.
Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Councilmember Scazola. Councilmember Furtado. Vice Mayor Landry.
Hi.
Mayor Bybee.
Hi.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Campbell amending chapter five point five zero of the Campbell Municipal Code regarding special events permits.
Go for the reading, be wait.
I have a motion by Councilmember Furtado and the second by Vice Mayor Landry to wait for the reading of the ordinance. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Councilmember Scazola.
Hi.
Councilmember Furtado.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Hi.
Mayor Bybee.
Hi. So the next item is a new business item, number twenty-one. Approval of special event permit for the historic downtown Campbell Classic Car Show. And our presenter is Police Captain Dan Livingston. Welcome, Dan.
Evening, Mayor, honorable council members. In February, the DCBA submitted an application for the first annual Campbell Classic Car Show to be held in downtown Campbell on July eighth, twenty twenty-three from nine AM to three PM. The event is being promoted as a family friendly event with a hundred and sixty classic cars competing for best in show and other categories. The entertainment for the estimated attendance of thirty-five hundred would be the classic car show itself, music along Campbell Avenue and a kids' area with a petting zoo and air jumps. The request is to hold the event in roughly the same footprint as the boogie in October best festivals, with the exception of also incorporating the two public lots along Orchard City Drive next to First Street. The actual closure of downtown would occur the night before at approximately ten PM. And the downtown area would reopen no later than four PM on the day of the event. The DCBA is also requesting DCBA member businesses be allowed to sell offsite beer and wine for those businesses who currently have alcohol sales permits. No other offsite alcohol sales would be approved. They would have to apply for a one day type fifty-eight catering permit under the DCBA as they're sponsored. The total estimated cost for this event to include fees, equipment and staffing is fifteen thousand six hundred. DCBA organizers are requesting a not to exceed fifty-five hundred dollar for all costs, which would result in a loss to the city of approximately ten thousand one hundred. It should be noted that this event is not eligible for a fee waiver as per the fee waiver policy. New events are not eligible for a fee waiver until after the event successfully held for one year. Staff does believe the event meets the factors for granting a permit and recommends that the city council adopt a resolution approving the issuance of a special event permit to the DCBA for the car show subject to the findings and conditions of approval as described in the resolution. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I know two of the event organizers, Mike Van Zandt and Carol Puya, are also here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions at council? Vice Mayor Landry?
Hi, Dan.
Hi.
Explain to me how this alcohol sales, there's something they get a cup. The cup has some special logo on it and they can be walking up and down the street, but only with that cup?
Yeah, so it would be like the boogie festival or Oktoberfest. We'd have approved cups with easily distinguishable logos. They would be able to sell them from the businesses and be allowed to walk through downtown with them. They just obviously couldn't leave the event footprint.
Oh, the event structure.
Yeah. And we would ask that they cease alcohol sales a half an hour before the event ends, like the boogie in Oktoberfest, and then request that the businesses participating have a one-hour moratorium on event alcohol sales and normal sales, which we do voluntarily with the boogie in the Oktoberfest.
Great, thanks. Any other, Councilmember Lopez?
Can I just clarify the last, that last part, thirty minutes versus one hour? What's the distinction?
So we do, so thirty minutes, we ask them to stop selling before the event ends. And then at that mark, we ask them to cease all alcohol sales for a year, or I'm sorry, for for an hour. Basically, to allow the businesses to.
Got it over. Thank you.
So, Dan, is it all of the restaurants that are have the ability to sell the the offsite beer and wine? And and who's going to monitor that?
It would have to be only, they're requesting only DCBA membership businesses and the DCBA would have to be the nonprofit that sponsors the type fifty-eight. So they basically have to get approval from the DCBA to be able to sell alcohol.
Okay. And if if there are violations of it, how how is that going to be enforced? Will there be patrol officers?
Yes, we we are.
Watching, I mean.
We kind of have a scaled staffing. We have three, starting off the supervisor and two officers until noon. And then we have two additional officers coming in. We also request that they have eighteen volunteers from the DCBA or under the DCBA umbrella to help monitor that also.
Okay. And you don't think that you you know that I've voiced my concerns about the the chamber festivals and how other alcohol is you are taken out of restaurants during the festival. And I just want to be sure that there's adequate supervision of that.
I think this will be easier to control based on the number of estimated attendance versus the magnitude of the boogie in the Oktoberfest.
And Vice Mayor Landry?
Are they going to do the wristbands, pardon, so that you know?
We we would ask them to do the wristbands, yes.
Create a question for me. With respect then to those businesses that already have their own permits to sell alcohol, they would still have to apply to DCBA to be kind of recognized as one of the businesses that would allow, be allowed to do it during this festival.
Only offsite sales. They would still be able to operate under their normal alcohol license with the.
Right. And it would be clear to them that, yeah, okay. Alcohol can only be taken out of the restaurant in those special cups during the festival.
Yes.
Yeah. And the liability is still theirs? Who's liability is it?
Well, if the alcohol leaves the restaurant with, it would fall under their alcohol license because they're not licensed to sell offsite for people leaving downtown. So it would go back to the original business who's allowing them to leave and go into the festival.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So I'll open it up for public comment. And I know that Carol and Mike are here. So welcome to come up and speak if you'd like.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, we're just trying to get back on our feet from COVID, trying to bring the DCA, DCBA, an event that can really be a benefit to all of the businesses here downtown. And we're looking to just make a fun family event and keep it relatively small. About like we, like we presented about a hundred and sixty classic cars will be in it professionally judged and we will try to put this thing on the map to be a a go-to show for the Bay Area.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, just for the, out of curiosity, how how's it going with getting with getting interest from classic car enthusiasts? And you know, how, what do you anticipate?
It's overwhelming, basically. Yeah, we'll fill the, we'll fill the spots within twenty-four hours of registration. We're getting other businesses to get on board to to join DCBA because of this event. And we should be able to bring enough revenue to try to recoup some money that we lost over the COVID time. And
Great. Glad to hear. Thank you.
Councilmembers Scazola.
Yeah, I just want to make comment. I'm really excited about this potential event and glad to see that you worked here. I'm glad to hear that there's a lot of interest and and I very much sympathize COVID did a number to everyone, including my own business. So I I can see this being something I agree with you full-heartedly that that we need to have more events like this to bring people back to Campbell, the downtown Campbell businesses.
Right.
Yeah, there should be raffle prizes. Every business should promote themselves in some way for it. And with the car show, so I think that it should benefit each and every business.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Carol, do you want to chime in? Or you have an opportunity to say anything if you'd like?
Good evening. I think Mike pretty well explained everything. We've been working on this with Dan for quite some time. Mayor Bybee, you know how long this whole thought process has been going on with us. We we have wanted to make this from the very beginning a family-friendly event. Thus, we wanted to bring in the petting zoo. We wanted to bring in the bouncy houses to encourage families to come down along with the classic cars. I think everybody knows that in the South Bay, how big car shows are. Campbell doesn't have one. So we wanted to try to see if that's something that we could get on the books, get rolling. And our whole thought process with the Downtown Business Association is just, you know, as you note, just to make more people come into our downtown in a friendly environment to be able to patronize our businesses and make us a little bit more active as a downtown. We're hoping that with not bringing offsite alcohol in that we could then encourage other restaurants and other businesses to become DCBA members. So with this event, you know, allow them through, you know, these these cups that we've talked about to be members, to be able to sell just beer and wine. We're not really talking about hard alcohol. To walk out onto the streets, which really for us is no different than what we do at our wine walks. So it would be the same coverage. Kind of a win-win. Get the businesses to make some money and have that coverage like we do with our wine walks. So I think all the way around, we're just very excited to bring something new to downtown Campbell. And we have, and Mike has worked very hard on this to get the people, to get the car people, to get the sponsors, to get the T-shirts, to get everything that we can. The logo is amazing, Historic Downtown Campbell Car Show. To be able to just bring an event like this to downtown Campbell.
Thank you, Carol. Anyone else in the audience? And is there any one online? I didn't see anything. So I will close the public comment and bring it back to council for discussion and/or motion. Councilmember Lopez?
Sorry, it's a pattern. Well, like others have expressed, I'm I'm glad not not just excited at the potential event, but you know, appreciative of all the hard work and in a way that really spotlights the best of of Campbell. I so and and I'm glad that we have the, you know, this creative idea for for a new event, which is exciting since since we have so many great ones already. I I I just wanted to add for my piece that I I would support, I'm open to hearing what others think, but I'd support the putting in a not to exceed, knowing that the you know, many of our businesses were particularly hit by COVID and and it's the the cost we're putting on events have have gone up. the, the cost we're putting on, um, events have, have gone up. Um, I, I would not support having the fee waiver because we, we have a process and I want to stick to it. Um, but, um, you, you know, I appreciate being able to consider the, the not to exceed as a, as a, um, one-time consideration.
So can, would you clarify, not to exceed, that is somewhat of a, I mean, are you asking for, or recommending a partial fee waiver or?
So the staff report makes the distinction between the fee waiver, uh, process, which, which would waive the fees as opposed to putting in a request for not to exceed. And, and what this is asking for is not to exceed fifty-five hundred. Can I have clarification from staff if I'm understanding that correctly?
It would still be a, considered a fee waiver, it's just a cap.
Somewhat like we did for the, the chamber.
Yes.
Cappings.
They're traditional ones and there are a percentage with the chamber, they started the not to exceed.
Okay, so, so I may have mis, misread that.
Councilmember Fratato?
Just, just to be clear, first of all, I do support the event, I think it can be and will be a very nice event. Per the current city policy, however, um, I believe we should not allow a fee waiver at this time. That's just, uh, we have a precedent for doing that, and I don't think an exception for a, a first-time event should be made. Uh, perhaps with experience and so on, we can take a look at that. But I think there are ways to recruit, for the organization to recruit the funds that they need to cover this.
Vice Mayor Landry?
I think this is great, I can get guys, I used to go to car shows with my dad when I was a kid, even as an adult, I go to them. So I think this is bringing a wonderful thing to downtown. Everything we can do to support our businesses recovering after COVID, I think is so important. I, I see a very well-thought-out plan, I was impressed at your drawing, like you have every car label and quantity, just the whole thing of how to handle alcohol. So I see a wonderful planning effort and the coordination that you've had with P E has been great. So I, I totally support this, I can't wait to come, can't wait to see all the cars. Uh, I am concerned about the fee waiver and, you know, it's starting to set a precedent. Um, but I, I would like to help. And I would say I would support more of a ten thousand dollar cap on the fee because it's projected to be about fifteen plus, I think is what I read in here. But I do support some level of it. And I, I would say, you know, we, we've supported and gave money towards the parklets. Um, we've helped the chamber, and so I, I would support a cap for the ten thousand.
Councilmember Scazola?
I just don't know if there's a consensus-ish on, on the, the fee exactly, like, sounds like we're discussing that and I'm not sure where we're at exactly.
So I'd like to, um, add that, first of all, I think this is a great family-friendly event that's being proposed. And I really hope it's successful and hope that it would continue. Um, and I know that the DCBA has had difficulty in holding their fundraisers for the last several years. And, and the fundraising efforts that you, that the DCBA does goes directly to the community in the form of funding the Bunnies and Bonnets Parade, the Carol O'Lights, the Creepy Crawler event. And we have set a precedent, we, we, we've helped with Parklets, we've helped the Chamber out on a couple of occasions, um, to help with their festivals because they've had difficulty. And so I, I feel that we should be supporting this and, and providing some type of fee waiver. I, I would recommend the fifty-five hundred, um, but I'm open to, um, hearing from others if, if they would like to go higher than that. But I really do feel that this, the DCBA really, um, their intent is really for family-friendly events, and that's the goal of this. Councilmembers Scazola?
Yeah, I'd ultimately agree with Mayor Bybee, I, I think the lower fee is a much better fee. Uh, and actually because it's the first time, like, I want them to hit the road running and not have to worry so much about the fee. And then, you know, maybe after the fact, we'll see how wildly successful, knock on wood, that it is, you know? Uh, but, but yes, I'm just, I support a much lower fee. We're, we are trying, we're recovering here still, and, and I, I don't want to hinder that in any way.
So I see Carol supporting, we have closed the public comment, but, um.
Is it okay to add a little more?
I'll, I'll allow you to.
Okay, sorry, um, I think maybe it might be important just from us as, as, um, the Campbell Business Association for you all to know that we are one, number one nonprofit. Um, number two, the only monies that, that come into us through all the events that we do, the only money that we keep as a fundraiser are our wine walks. Um, in the past, pre-COVID, where we've had our wine walks and we've had a thousand, twelve-hundred tickets sold, we've made forty, fifty thousand dollars per wine walk. Um, during COVID, when we've had to cut this down to maybe three hundred sales, maybe five hundred sales, and then carrying this on into our third year, we don't have a lot of money going into this event. Um, and again, our whole thought process is to try to build this back up again, we're just not there yet. Our last wine walk, thank goodness, we sold seven hundred tickets, although we offered eight hundred, still trying to be cautious. Um, but at least we're trying to climb back up there. Um, but at this point in time, we just don't have it. Um, we know we have to pay something, if it was pre-COVID or we never went through that, this wouldn't even be a question for us. But I think the consideration just that we are trying to build back up our downtown with what it is that we're trying to deal with is not very much at this point. So that was my.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Council, Vice Mayor Landry?
All right, Carol, you changed my mind.
Councilmember Fratato?
Uh, I guess I'm sort of.
I changed my mind.
I, I realize, uh, I respect. Uh, I respect all of your comments, um. I do have some concerns about that significant amount of fee waiver for a first-time event. Um, I, I do want to commend, uh, Captain Lindison for the amount of time that he took, uh, with this. Um, because he had to ensure that we met all the fire standards and, uh, the safety standards and so on. I know the original was for additional, uh, larger number of cars and things like that. Uh, sound argumentative to your comment earlier, but I just wanted to say that with, with respect to the parklets and the fact that we were out there, I think we had special funds that allowed for that to happen. Uh, so I'm not sure if we can, some of those funds were the same purpose or not. Uh, I don't know if they're eligible, but, uh, so I, I just have some concerns about first-time events, you know, significant fee waivers.
And, and I, to clarify, I mean, I, this would be a one-time, um, fee waiver. And I, I would suggest that we use the ARPA funds because we use those for the parklets and for the, yeah. So.
So now.
So with that, is there further discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion that the city council adopt the resolution approving the issuance of a special event permit for the downtown Campbell Business Association, historic downtown Campbell Classic Car Show, subject to the finding and conditions of approval as described in the resolution. But, and then I add here the cap of the fifty-five hundred, is that what I got? And, and with the cap of five thousand five hundred, uh, for the fee, we have to add in there that comes out of our.
I think you do, I mean, that's.
Yeah, so, so, uh, I'm, I'm sorry. If we were to technically give them the money, it would be more complicated for our part, but there's no limitation on us paying part of the town costs and our personal costs with ARPA funds. So if the council is interested in us using this, it would be helpful to make part of your motion, but we'll do that on our end, not, not that we're giving them their money, but our cost, using our, uh, subsidize our subsidy.
So, uh, in addition to what I read, the cap of fifty-five hundred and to authorize staff to use the ARPA to subsidize the cost for city council costs.
Is that good?
So I just want to clarify, so they're going to pay fifty-five hundred dollars. That's the rest, yeah. So, uh, there's a motion by Vice Mayor Landry and a second by Councilmember Scazola to approve the staff recommendation, including a, uh, partial fee waiver, um, up to fifty-five hundred dollars for the costs. And staff will allocate the funds accordingly with ARPA funds.
I'm sorry, ju- just to clarify, um, if I'm understanding, it's not up to fifty-five hundred, it's that it can't exceed.
Can't exceed, I'm sorry, yeah, not to exceed fifty-five hundred. And so with that, we'll ask for a roll call. Councilmember Lopez?
Hi.
Councilmember Scazola?
Hi.
Councilmember Fratato?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Full hearted, yes.
Mayor Bybee? Yes. Okay, motion passes. Good luck. Okay, so we'll move on to item, to an unfinished business item, uh, number, I'm sorry, never mind. Back up a little bit, number twenty-two, receive housing program audit and authorize application for a destination home grant to support an unhoused specialist position. Our presenter is Community Development Director, Rob Eastwood.
Okay, good evening, uh, honorable Mayor Bybee, council members, again, Rob is the Community Development Director. So this item, uh, before you, uh, I consider a tandem item, uh, to your previous consideration of the housing element that you adopted in April of two thousand twenty-three. Uh, going back in time to two thousand twenty-two, knowing the city, uh, was embarking on preparing new housing elements, uh, knowing we had recognized, uh, our housing program was, had been generally under-resourced. Uh, we did commission, you know, through the commit process to have an outside expert come in and conduct which generally a program financial audit of our housing program. And the main intent was, uh, to look at and see how could we provide enough sustainable resources into Campbell, uh, from a staffing standpoint, from a financial standpoint, to be successful, uh, in implementing our housing element announcing programs going forward. I'd say this from a metaphorical standpoint, uh, if you consider the housing element a car and you've designed, uh, perhaps the Lamborghini, it's gotten a lot of accolades. Even our H U D staff has said we have a very stellar housing element that has a lot of programs that are very ambitious about promoting and creating housing, affordable housing. Uh, if that is the car and, and the means to get there, it needs an engine, uh, to, to power the car. So in tandem with the architecture and the plan of how to do housing, uh, tonight is, is a lot of it is recommendations of how to put the horsepower, the engine, the sustainable resources into that car to make it go, uh, to where Campbell wants it to go, if that helps. Uh, so with that, I'm mainly here for introductions and to help close up, uh, uh, to summarize, the city did hire Rebecca Garcia. Uh, she's an expert in the field, has managed many housing programs, is the current Housing Director, uh, for their city in Santa Clara County. Uh, she began work in September two thousand twenty-two, uh, conducted extensive, uh, financial and management audits and talked with a lot of staff and council members. And tonight, uh, is a result of her audit and recommendations, uh, so with that, I will give it over to Becky.
Good evening, council, Campbell teammates, community, it's an honor to be here with you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to conduct this program audit. I'm Rebecca Garcia, and I will, the, the paper is extensive, but I will focus on the high-level recommendations. And Stephen promised me that this was gonna go to the right when I clicked it. Okay, so as Rob indicated, we began this housing program audit, um, in September of two thousand twenty-two. This is all on the heels of lots of other housing activity that you have going on in your work program, your housing element, among other things. I really approached this taking a look at the past, the present and the future, and the housing element that you just signed up for with state HCD and the many ninety-five policies and programs that you have the responsibility of implementing over the next eight-year horizon. Uh, the, the audit really took a look at your below-market rate program, your housing program financial records, your housing program needs, your current staff capacity in relationship to what you do now, and then in relationship to really what you're planning to do over the next eight-year cycle. Um, and then also there was an opportunity to take a look at some homeless programming needs as well. Moving on to findings and recommendations, um, the first finding might not be earth-shattering, especially since you've already got some of this allocated in your budget. As Rob mentioned, some of this work was done in tandem, but, um, the first and most important recommendation is to acknowledge that there really is a lack of sufficient staff capacity. Right now, you have point four of a senior planner, uh, an excellent senior planner, but point four nonetheless, um, to implement housing programs and affordability and really partner with your BMR administrator house keys to manage the BMR program. The recommendation that comes out of this is to hire a housing manager in fiscal year twenty-four. And this is the, the, um, graph here is showing you, really Campbell is not unique. Many cities have zero housing staff at this point, and I really commend you at taking a look and pausing and asking yourselves and reflecting what you really need to carry out this work moving forward. So, um, I'm hopeful that other cities will follow your lead. Um, but as you can see, you know, if you look at Mountain View, they have a significant more staff, they do a lot more production. Um, Campbell is about to grow your BMR portfolio, we'll get into that in just a second. But this really shows, you know, point four of a senior planner in relationship to the commitment just made through the housing element um, isn't well-matched. Okay, below-market rate administration, the second finding was really the current service level of your below-market rate contract um, would need to be revised in anticipation of meeting your upcoming BMR demands. So making the, I made the assumption that you would meet your arena goals over the next eight-year cycle. And as the council is more aware than anybody, your arena allocation has tripled from nine hundred and thirty-three units to two thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven units. So making the assumption that, that that would come to fruition in the eighth year. Um, your below-market rate portfolio is going to grow in units more, you know, nearly four hundred and fifty units. So you're going to see a tremendous amount of growth. The recommendation there is to annually, um, to annually allocate about forty-two thousand dollars in addition to your existing BMR contract. Of course, this is something I would recommend evaluating annually based on your real-life development portfolio. But again, this is making the assumptions, and I hope you do, um, meet your arena goals over the next eight years. Okay, revenue, um, we started, I started this housing program audit with the intention of really taking a deep dive into your financial records, but it be, and your finance team was excellent, um, but it became just really clear in five and a half years, you began to see a deficit. Um, I don't believe this is unique to Campbell. Uh, lots of other cities have similar problems, especially with redevelopment agency going away. There really hasn't been a new funding source for affordable housing. Um, so the third finding was additional revenue needs to remain top of mind. And in five and a half years, you have an issue. So when and if you do hire a housing manager, prioritizing new revenue streams, probably not just one in the short term and the long term, is going to remain a priority. A finding for increased communication, um, Campbell did a lot of communication throughout your housing element work, but really communication, I have found in, in housing in particular, is so important. Um, a lot of times you will hear the voices of people who are not housing insecure, but you won't necessarily, um, hear as loud or as frequent the voices of people who are experiencing housing insecurity. So having someone inside City Hall be that internal champion to share those voices and, you know, whether it's the teacher or the new police officer or an unhoused individual, um, being able to share that intel and data with council and with the city manager is really important and, and really demystifying affordable housing. Um, you know, ninety, what is it, ninety-two thousand dollars for a person of one is considered low income in our county. A lot of folks don't realize that affordable housing is for them. Um, and I have found it's a message you just have to say over and over and over again. So the recommendation here is to create a housing communication outreach and engagement plan to engage with the community. Um, homeless services wasn't actually in the initial scope, but because the Santa Clara County's point-in-time count released their results, um, back in February, it provided a natural opportunity because Campbell had actually the highest increase according to the census count. Um, for the community or those who are not aware, the homeless census count is where volunteers get together. They, um, in partnership with the county, the county partners with every city, and they physically go out early hours of the morning over a two-day period and count how many unhoused people they see in your community. Campbell had a hundred and ninety-one percent increase, going from seventy-four individuals in two thousand nineteen to two hundred and sixteen in two thousand twenty-two. Um, the homeless census count is not a perfect count, it's just a snapshot in time, but it is the one, uh, measurement methodology that has been consistently used for many, many years. So it is important to pay close attention to it. The recommendation here is one that I'm very excited about for you, is to consider applying for if. The recommendation here is one that I'm very excited about for you, is to consider applying for a three-year destination home capacity building grant. Um, this, it's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for each year for three years. This would allow you to hire an unhoused specialist. This essentially is a case manager, someone who works directly with the unhoused individuals' families, learns their stories, offers services, is also really good to, um, okay, they need rental assistance, deposit assistance, they're sort of in the backend, making those connections for them. And then really, when, when the county and other partners do counts like this, your unhoused specialist becomes your homeless expert, specific to the city of Campbell. And they'd be able to say, yeah, you know, this, this feels right, or hmm, you know, yeah, the majority of these folks are by the creek. And so you'll have a little bit more intel and a better understanding. Um, the other reason it is extremely important for every city to have direct services in their city, um, you want all of your unhoused individuals to be assessed through the county's, this is a very long, boring term, vulnerability index assessment tool. It's essentially a survey that we use to, um, assess homeless individuals, how long they've been homeless, what their health conditions are, how vulnerable they are. Are they a veteran, um, do they already have a section eight voucher? Um, it's about a thirty-five to forty-five minute survey. There's lots of trauma in, um, the home, in, within, among some homeless individuals. So you really need to have that, uh, trust builder, that unhoused specialist who has a social work lens to start to build a relationship with them. Because even in the beginning, when they say, no, you know, they may say, I'm not interested, you know, I'm not interested. I have seen that answer change as they get approached by the same friendly face who is literally there to just offer help. Um, so that's really the role of an unhoused specialist is to connect, to build trust, and to get those individuals assessed. Sorry, I forgot this important part. The reason the assessment is so critical is because it is how they end up in permanent housing, not just in Campbell, but countywide. So wherever they're building units, once your person is into that database, then they have a chance at being housed. Okay, that concludes my presentation, I'll respect your healthy agenda tonight, and I will turn it back over to Rob.
Thank you, Becky. So, uh, to, to follow up here, uh, staff has looked at, uh, five top-level recommendations, uh, from Ms. Garcia. And, uh, in your staff report, and is on the screen, uh, is recommending the following. Uh, number one, we'll be discussing the upcoming budget, uh, we have put in the recommended budget, hiring of a housing manager. Uh, two, we have recommended an increase in B M R administration allocation, uh, consistent with Ms. Garcia's recommendations. With respect to revenue, uh, one of the items on your consent, uh, calendar tonight was to start work on access studies to look at modifying and inclusion housing elements and commercial linkage fees, those are potential revenue sources that we can tap into. And we're recommending to come back in the fall, just with a separate study session to identify potential, um, new revenue sources to stand up the housing program. Uh, for, uh, a high priority of the housing, uh, division and the housing manager going forward will be a broad communication plan. And then finally, uh, the formal action before you tonight, we do have a great opportunity, we have been in contact with Destination Home staff. Uh, they have invited us to apply for a grant, there is no matching funds required of Canada for this, this is a hundred percent funded by Destination Home. We need to authorize, uh, the city to apply for that grant, um, which would be submitted in the next few weeks. As Rebecca mentioned, it's a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, uh, in funding, which should fund the position and will be for a period of three years. With that, the action for you tonight, of course, is to accept this audit, uh, Ms. Garcia and myself are available for any questions. And the formal action is to authorize and allow, uh, application for the Destination Home Grant. And then that'll finish up, thank you.
Thank you, Rob, and thank you, Rebecca, for the presentation. Are there questions for council, Councilmember Fratato?
I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions, Rob. So while the action tonight is primarily to apply for the grant and so on, this would, uh, bring on, if we were successful, uh, someone who specializes in, um, homeless programs in particular, uh, for a period of three years, uh, it would be a, basically a temporary position, uh, for that time. But in addition to that, as part of the budget studies, the goal would be for us to hire then, uh, a regular housing manager as a full-time position to generally manage the entire program. So kind of like two people, uh, the latter are being just for a three-year period is your ultimate goal, is if I'm understanding everything correctly.
That, y- you have crystallized it, uh, exactly, that is the recommendation.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Just kind of following up with Dan, so the unhoused specialist is a fixed temporary three-year position. Is the hundred fifty thousand grand going to cover all the pension, all the life, everything, the salary? That seems kind of low for that position with, with the pension costs and above salary kind of thing.
Your ultimate for pension?
I don't know how that works with the, for staff.
Some more to come, we are looking likely at a contract position, so it would be an independent contractor working for the city. There, there is a model, and other cities have used, and Becky can speak to this, on having a, uh, a staff position, it takes a bit more time to stand up. I, I think to get someone on board and deploy faster, um, and we do think kind of a thousand is reasonable to fund it, that we use it, we would use a contract position.
And is there any ability to have the housing manager and unhoused specialist be the same person? Or does the grant require that to be a one person?
On our understanding with Destination Home, they, they would only, uh, apply the grant resources to the unhoused specialist.
For one full-time position? Can it be a part-time position?
It could, I, I'd have Becky have B M R resource to talk about the, the pros and cons of that option, so.
Um, the unhoused specialist position, the way it's worked in, um, some other cities, is it's a full-time position. That job is really a social worker job to connect with the homeless individual. So it's not really a sit behind the desk, develop policies and programs, it's really a go pour a cup of coffee or a glass of water to the homeless individual on the creek and get to know them and take the iPad and do the assessment, so it's very much an engagement role. Um, not to say they can't also develop additional homeless programs, I'm, I'm sure they will, and in, in the city that I work in, we certainly do. But the primary responsibility is to be the face of homeless help in your city and engaging and developing trust and relationship, which is really necessary to, to break through some of the trauma. The housing, in, in that position is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, including salary and benefits. So it does leave you a little bit of wiggle room for a budget for a, a homeless program. The housing manager is really more the implementer of your housing element policies. It's a lot, it's just a, it's, it's a lot to put on one person, and it's two different skillsets.
Okay, and then based on our number, I know we went up a hundred and ninety-one percent, that's pretty sad, but it still seems to be a low number. How does per, half of that, is that the right word, per person, other cities? If, if we're looking at a hundred and fifty thousand a year grant, you divide, I don't do math well in my head, but you divide that back out on the less than three hundred people. How are other cities, you know, like, how does that, like, our number seems low, I'm looking at San Jose at six thousand, how much do they pay to have that person manage six thousand versus our three hundred, you know, where, where's the magnitude of scale, I want to say?
I don't know off the top of my head, but San Jose has nearly a hundred staff in their housing department alone, totally separate from the planning department. You did remind me of something that is important, which is the unhoused specialist does not only assist people who are literally currently homeless, but they're also trying to catch people who are about to become homeless. So they will get, you, you will be surprised how many calls they get, um, from folks who are looking for that deposit or rental assistance or utility assistance. So they're really catching and then trying to solve, um, on the other end. Um, the other thing they do is some encampment response coordination. So, uh, you know, before there's any type of abatements by the water district, um, they will be the first person out there offering services and engagement in a shelter bed. Even if the shelter bed is not in Campbell necessarily, they can find out, okay, County of Santa Clara, we're gonna do an abatement or, or Valley Water's gonna do an abatement, for example, in two weeks, we need to be able to offer shelter beds. Um, the county needs time and an advance notice to be able to do that, because there really isn't enough shelter beds county-wise. So they're doing that internal coordination for you as well.
Any other questions? So, Kelly? I have a question on that, um, homeless count, is there any way to verify those numbers?
I wish, it's really just a snapshot in time. Um, I'm going to guess that because you have a lot of creek, um, when COVID occurred, speaking of COVID tonight and the implications, you know, there wasn't orders from the state to not move people around. So, um, Valley Water did not ask people to move, um, and they still currently don't, they will do some cleaning up. Um, but they will not move people, and that's something that kind of started as a result of COVID and the orders they got from the state. So I know in other cities, mine included, we've seen an increase on the creek.
But, but San Jose moves people, and so, and we're, we're adjacent to San Jose, I mean, i- is it possible that the boundaries got blurred and, I, cause that, that just seems like a lot, a big increase compared to previous years. And, and I, I would question who do, who does the, the count? I mean, do we, does our staff, anyone from our city join these people and count, or is it, is it a county function?
The county takes the lead, um, they seek out volunteers from every single city. Um, I would defer to Stephen if, if your local folks participated, but usually folks participate, um, from each city, and they recruit nonprofits and volunteers to help support that effort. Um, I think the biggest takeaway is you have an increase. So even if it, even if the one hundred and ninety-one percent, um, doesn't feel ring true, really, your police department will probably have the best intel on whether or not they've seen an increase or not. But, um, the best advice I could give you is don't wait for a bigger increase before you become proactive, engaged, and dialed into the county system. Um, because you just don't want it to get, become a larger problem, especially because you're already so lean.
Thank you. Councilmember Scazzola.
Yeah, I think I actually can help answer the question, I, I've actually done the census work, so these numbers are based on the census mostly, is that where the data came from originally?
Um, no, they're actually literally based on waking up at five in the morning and driving around. And if you're a volunteer, you sign up, you show up to City Hall or wherever the, the meeting point is, and they'll give you, okay, here's the census tracts and the maps that you have to cover, go with your sister and go conquer and count. And they have a new app this year, and tell us exactly how many people, trailers, RVs, what do you see?
So it initially used the, the census data from the last U S census, but then, uh, it's like a second round?
No, not totally diff, yeah. Sorry, yeah, maps.
Cause, uh, when I, I actually did it, and I actually had to, uh, track homeless people down for, I think it was twenty-ten was the, the year I did it. And, uh, and it was, I can say that it, it, I think you even acknowledged it, that, that it's difficult, extremely difficult. And, uh, oftentimes we might be counting somebody a couple of times, several times, emotionally, same person. So to, uh, Mayor Bybee's point, that could be a possibility that that number is more enlarged than, than it actually is. However, I, I do want to acknowledge, of course, we've had really difficult times, and, and I wouldn't be surprised if that is, uh, disunaccurate.
Any other questions? Councilmember Fratato?
Um, yes, you brought up something I wanted to ask you about. First of all, let me just personally thank you for all the work you do and, uh,
Thank you.
promoting housing to people in need, and sort of the comprehensive program, it's very much appreciated. But you mentioned the water district, and that has been a concern to me, it seems like the water district should have some level of responsibility, um, for this issue and not just, you know, cities, um, because they're, just because their creeks go through different cities, I, I don't think they can just sort of say, well, now it's your responsibility. They, they should have some responsibility, for example, at least providing restrooms or cleanup of trash and things like that, to keep all of that out of the water. Because, you know, I'm on the water authority, uh, for clean water, and we're trying to prevent, uh, construction sites and others from things going into the storm drains. Well, likewise, you know, there's a lot of, uh, elements of, uh, trash and so on that get put into the creek. I just feel that, but have you had any experience, have they expressed any? Well, I shouldn't, I shouldn't use that word, but I mean, uh, any, uh,
No, recent experience, actually.
Positive, uh, comment, um, from the water district that they're willing to step up a little more than what, at least what I perceive they're not doing.
So they, I, um, I recently learned, they have a homeless encampment committee meeting on their website and on the Valley Water website. It's a little hard to find, but I'm happy to send Rob the details of how to get there. Uh, but that is where cities are to go to advocate to their board for cleanups in their community. That's where we should be directing residents to go when they're upset about the creek, um, and the, and the garbage and, and whatnot. Um, they are, they've, have a strong position that they're not moving people, but I have experienced them cleaning up. Um, we've sent letters to them, and they've been responsive, I think the reality is they're working with every single city in the county and, and really San Jose. Um, the last committee meeting I attended, which I had just learned about it, it was very San Jose-centric, and it was mostly San Jose residents. And, you know, their encampments are huge compared to some of the smaller cities, but we have had success in advocating and working with them. Um, but part of that is having someone inside who's really like tracking this stuff. So you have to have a representative to go show up to that encampment committee meeting and say, hey, we're noticing this is getting a little out of hand.
And, and if, if I can just add to that briefly, um, just because our legislative subcommittee ju- just heard this. Um, we actually learned that Valley Water is prohibited from taking certain actions that might seem common sense, so there's a lot that they can't do. And they have a bill that so far seems like it's going unanimously, unanimously through the legislature, um, to remove some of those prohibitions and allow them to work more actively. So I'm hopeful actually that the timing is, is really good for this.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Lopez, and you, there's so much in housing, it's hard to remember everything, but you also just reminded me, they have a cash-for-trash program where they actually pay unhoused folks to, um, clean up the creek.
I'll, I'll add to what, um, Sergio commented, I'm on the Valley Water District Policy Advisory Committee, and I actually was a speaker on the homeless committee a couple of years ago. Um, they have a district act, the district act, uh, does not allow them to spend money on housing. Those proposals, put tents, they wanted tents in the per ponds and all this other place, they wanted bathrooms down in the creek. And it was like, get the bathroom down, fill it up, how do you get it back out? And how does it not tip over kind of stuff? And that was when the EPA put a cease and desist on Coyote Creek, that they had to, uh, clean out the jungle. And it became very contentious because the, but it's because the district act limits how they spend their money. It can't be providing housing, and there was way too much, like, where does the tent go? Everything they have is either water or maintenance and that kind of stuff. So it does bring up a lot of it, and I'm glad to hear this legislation now that potentially could affect that. But it's been, I mean, I, I spoke, I don't know, probably six years ago on that homeless committee about these topics. So I do have a question for the chief, though. Can't just sit over there. Hi, Gary.
Hello.
Are we, uh, this is two thousand twenty-two numbers, are we seeing that same number now, or our houses are, are, is it worse?
So I've had this conversation with, uh, with Rob, uh, I completely disagree with that number, um, that's not what we're seeing. Um, I think if anything, we have seen a decrease in the number of unhoused in our cities. So I have questioned this number myself, because it doesn't match with what we're seeing in day-to-day operations.
What would you say are annual, is, and I'm, I'm sure it's almost the same person through the year, right? Have we seen a high turnover of people and?
I, I believe since COVID, we've seen a decrease in the number of people on, especially on, um, on the creek trail. And on that heat map, actually, when I first received a copy of this report, I had officers go out to, um, that area, which is near the Gold's Gym over there near Hamilton and Santa Moss Expressway, and there were no vehicles, no, no encampments, nothing parked out there. So, um, uh, I question the, uh, the validity and the accuracy of these numbers, it does not at all match what we're seeing.
How many, would you guess, are we under the hundred or under fifty?
Well, it's hard for me to put a number to it, because I, I think that two hundred and sixteen number is, I can tell you, does not match what I'm seeing, uh, that our officers are seeing on a day-to-day basis, that's not to say that there are not unhoused people in Campbell, there are, and we're dealing with them regularly. Um, but, uh, it would just be a guess if I were to give you a number, uh, without having more data.
Thank you. So if there are no more questions, I'll open it up for public comment, anyone in the council? So if there are no more questions, I'll open it up for public comment. Anyone in the council chamber wishing to speak? And I don't see anybody online. So I'll close public comment and bring it back to discussion and or emotion. Councilmember Lopez.
Uh, yeah, I just want to start by saying, thank you, Mrs. Garcia, for your your work. This this is a really great snapshot of of where we are in our program and where we're moving. And as you said, looking to the future. Also, just going to be more excited at the at the opportunity. So far as I know, I think well, I'll just start with with the grant since we're on the slide. I think San Jose has received some funding and Morgan Hill, I know. So, you know, you're well positioned to inform us about best practices. But I I just, you you know, we were chatting before, I think it's exciting to hear that that Campbell's being considered for this. And I think being put on the map in that way puts us in line for for more funding, more opportunities. So I think I think that that's really exciting. I I don't want to get too lost in in the debate over the particular numbers because I I don't doubt the the chief's experience at at all. I'm sure that's correct. And anyone will tell you, you know, there's issues with the numbers. But even if we haven't seen an increase in, you know, if we're just at that seventy-four figure or whatever, or if it lets it's it's gone down. Those are still individuals that are that are being impacted. And you know, the the chief will hear about some of those, you know, not not every individual might 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 be in a situation where where they're interacting with with public safety. But I I think the opportunity that we have is that it's 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 something that that we we know is a problem. We we all, you know, get get questions about it. But also feels like something that 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 we we can tackle in a very real way, where these kind of services could actually really have an impact for for the funding that that we're putting in. So it feels like an opportunity. The other thing that I want to, I don't want to get lost is that this, if if we hire for for this position with this grant, it's not only going to impact currently unhoused individuals, but also those who are on the brink of getting pushed to homelessness, which all the data will tell you is is where it it just takes in many cases, one, you know, mishap, one event for for things to go wrong. And the amount of people who could potentially fall into homelessness is is much greater than the actual number that that we see at any one time on on the streets. And and I can just tell you from my experience, that is the most common type of 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 requests. I get reaching out for for help is someone on the brink of be potentially being put on the streets or or just not knowing where to go. And I have to tell you, it's going to feel a lot better to go from saying, well, you know, I I'm not sure we can do it, you know, our staff is great and is very always very responsive, or, you know, maybe the the county to being able to say, hey, we have a one-stop shop for you to go to clear resources, you know, phone number, contact information for those kind of requests, I I think is incredibly exciting. So I I will gladly support the motion. You know, I know a lot of great discussion. I know a a lot of other pieces to figure out, but I think this is a really exciting step.
Councilmember Scazzola.
Yeah, I just want to say, Councilmember Lopez, very well said. I hundred percent agree with everything you just said. And I I too am very excited about this because whatever the number may be, we see our unhoused population, you know, quite just down the street. I, you know, had an incident just about a month ago, you know, where we are a wonderful town. Everyone loves us. The point is that this is a very exciting opportunity, and not every city has this. And if we have an opportunity to have this grant from Destination Home, which is also a really wonderful organization, I say we go for a hundred percent.
Councilmember Fratato.
Free that I certainly support the motion. And I think, you know, if a grant provides someone for three years, I I think that's great. And then at that point in time, we can decide whether there might be another grant available, whether we want to hire this person or someone else to continue or or not. But then the housing manager, like you indicated, if we approve that in the budget, would manage the actual plan itself and be able to concentrate on that whole program. So I think this would be great. And so the advantage of the the numbers, which may very well be correct incorrect as far as works are, are that that's what that's the data that the renters use because that's the official data they have. So we have a better chance most other cities for, I would say, getting a grant.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Yeah, thank you very much for all the work that you did and all the research that went into this. And thanks, Rob, for bringing this forward to us. You know, we have made a commitment to the housing element. We have been on the forefront. We were the first city in Santa Clara County to approve it, the fourteenth in the Bay Area, I think, for the numbers you were throwing out at me. And I I'm proud of that. I'm proud that we're embracing this. I have a concern about the housing manager. Being, you know, we're looking at our budget, you know, where's the economy going? So we have this goal over here, and we want to embrace it. But at the same time, we have a city budget that we need to manage, and who knows where the economy is going? And the housing manager position, is it a two-year contract? Because they're talking about only two years of funding? And then would it be just a two-year position to start? And then or is it a full-time? That's it?
So so tonight, we're we're making a recommendation that the city consider funding that position. When we bring the budget to you, we'll bring those funding strategies of how that position will be funded through. I can explain that to you now. That's probably more right for that budget discussion. And there's some strategy we have with potentially using ARPA funds to supplement those for two years. That position for two years will extend the life of the housing fund when we pay for that position. And then allow us time, those two years to bring up to speed, the the tactics revenue sources that we're looking at. So we'll talk more about that when we get to the budget with the strategy for that position in the context of the budget. But in a nutshell, there there is some strategy we have for dealing with the financial concerns about the
By approving these recommendations tonight, are we approving a full-time permanent position? Or we're just saying, you know, discuss it later in the budget?
Correct.
And I think the unhoused specialist, I mean, I may sound critical. I just kind of want to know the facts because I don't see two hundred plus people. Like Gary said, you know, where I looked at that map, I was like, I've never seen someone over there. So I I would prefer to see them combined as as a full-time job. Although I get that the unhoused specialist is a grant, and that the hundred and thirty is a three-year term, it's a consultant or contractor. Right? It's not a city staff. So I I want to move forward. I want us to implement our plan. And I my heart goes out to all these people. And the unhoused person is the worst, but the person who's one paycheck away from losing their house. And if this person can help them, I support them.
Thank you. And I'll just add on that I support the recommendations, and I'm glad to see that I regardless of the number, we have a need to to address. And I'm glad to see that we're taking a positive step to to address that as far as the the housing manager. And as far as the unhoused specialist, I I fully support that grant. It's a great opportunity for for grant funding. I know it's a three-year grant, but I would like to see further explorer exploration of partnering with some of our adjoining cities, possibly to partner with them as the grant, as the year as it dwindles down, and and we may need to find an additional revenue source or maybe be able to help them out or have a a full-time position between two cities. I I think that would be a great way to explore an opportunity. And I also believe, and I've said this before, that we need to be looking at additional revenue streams to support our needs in in the housing area, especially in the affordable housing area. So with that, I will ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion that the city council receive and provide comments on the housing program audit report and adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for, negotiate, and execute capacity building grant with destination home for an unhoused specialist position.
I'll second.
Thank you. So there's a motion by Vice Mayor Landry and a second by Councilmember Lopez to approve the staff recommendation. Roll call, please.
Right. Sorry.
Got it, Councilmember Lopez.
That hasn't happened before.
Councilmember Scazzola.
Almost as excited, aye.
Councilmember Fratato. Vice Mayor Landry.
Might you all hold harder yays tonight?
Mayor Bybee.
Aye. Okay, so now we'll go on to unfinished business. Item twenty-three, authorize the city manager to execute a contract amendment to the consultant services agreements for building plan check and inspection services with True North Bureau Veritas, O'Brien Code Consulting, and West Code Consulting. And presenting is Community Development Director Robbie.
May I? No, no PowerPoint presentation. Just a few high notes. Generally, previously before the council, we had authorized an RFP for the city to go out and hire contract plan check services. The nature of these services is to do outside plan check on building permits to come in our department. And if there's not bandwidth, the building official and inspection staff will use these services. Important point, in all instances, the permit fees we take in pay for these services, although they do come out of the general fund. In all instances, there's never an instance where the amount of money we take from an applicant is less than we need to pay for the services itself. So in general senses, it's a pass-through because the fees we take in pay for this service. It is a big number before you tonight. Originally, the RFP we put out and the authorization from the council were for contracts up to three hundred thousand dollars. We put some statistics in the report. Two big highlights. Number one, we are seeing a pretty big increase in the number of plan checks, building permits, and as those demands have risen over the last several years, which stretches our department and the need for these project services. And two, as you mentioned in the last item, we have big ambitions for housing, planning for at least up to five thousand housing units. The nature of those projects are much bigger, they're stacked flats, and the need for plan check services will grow probably exponentially next few years. In addition, we are acknowledging we are contracting for inspection services. Those are essential to supplement our inspection staff and help out with special projects such as measure all. In summary, we're asking you authorize the augment to go up to one million dollars. Again, again, these are paid by permit fees, and it will give us the flexibility of the building official to use these services to meet our customer service demands. I'm available for questions. Our building official, Bob Lennon is here for questions also. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. And I also want to mention that there is a desk item on this item, and maybe we could get some clarification from the city attorney because there were some questions to what the actual changes are compared to the packet.
The yes, the the only change was to reference that the city council is approving the contract rather than the city manager who will be executing the contracts.
Thank you. So are there any other questions that council vice, I mean, Councilmember Lopez?
I, yeah. Rob, I'm I'm just curious about the the increase in in plan checks. And do you see that as kind of a trend going up? I know you have the projects in in here, which is very helpful to see. Yeah, maybe you could start there with any trends or black there that you see.
Yeah, we do. The the number has gone up significantly, as you've seen sort of past and present. We do anticipate, again, planning for housing, and we do have developers, we think starting to submit applications, that that those numbers will actually increase much more. And again, the nature of the projects coming in will be different than what Campbell has seen. So, for example, the Prune Hard would be a stacked fact, high-density project as an electronic prize. And they need fully outside expertise services to come in and and provide plan check and our inspection. It will grow. So we're just, again, trying to get ahead of that and have the the resources available to 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 review those projects.
And do you know the average review time when someone does come in on under the the existing contract?
Let me ask Bob if he can answer that question.
Or even just a general sense, just kind of what's the experience of someone goes in through the process?
Absolutely. Beauty. I'm Bob Lennon. I'm a building official. Time really has not changed from past to present. But as the projects get more again, larger, there's more people involved with it, especially the fire department. When you think about aerial access and access with the engines, the apparatus, everything just gets more complicated. And what that means is the staff that we have here is just beyond them. And then there's a time element. So when we go to this outside plan checker, you have specialists, specialists for residential development, specialists for commercial developments, specialists for single-family homes. And they have staffed engineers that are experts in their field, and we don't have that here.
Thanks. So so the time I made.
Time is going to be the same. But it's hard to predict because if you have a a four-story structure on top of a podium, you could be in that plan check for two or three months. And so it's a little different than doing a single-family residence, which is usually two to three weeks. And so we would have to get the context of what the project is. And what we're seeing is we're seeing these projects only being larger in volume, but in dollars. So whereas before we had a budget of maybe a hundred thousand a year, we're seeing that eaten up on one project or two projects. And although we're we're able to kind of stay with it today, next year, when we see this housing boom and the and the bigger developments, we're going to be scrambled.
All right. Thank you both. Very interesting.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll open it up for public comment. I don't, anyone in the council chamber wishing to speak? And I think we may have one person online that may wish to speak. Susan, do you wish to speak?
No, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to work for the city of Campbell. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I will close the public portion and bring it back to council for discussion and a motion. Any question, any comments?
Yeah, well.
Oh, Vice Mayor Landry.
I was just trying to be polite, Sergio. I I mean, I I see the need for this. I mean, the projects are getting bigger, the cost is going up. We're going to build, what, three thousand units in eight years? I've I've seen, you know, I I read the memos, I read these reports. They're very thorough, they're very technical. And I agree with our building official that we don't have all that expertise in-house. There's no way we could cover the breadth and depth of these projects. So I'm in a hundred percent support of this. And if anybody else wants to make comments, I'll add this motion.
Any other comments, Sergio?
Yeah, I'll I'll say I completely agree with everything that was just said. The the only request I would make is that in in the next couple of years, as we start to see those larger projects come through, if it's for for whatever reason, beyond the scope of what we're anticipating playing for now, come back to us and communicate that early so we can try to get out ahead of that as much as as possible. But, you know, but definitely the the need is there, and I appreciate us being proactive.
Vice Mayor Lopez. I'll make a motion again. I'd make a motion that the city council adopt the resolution increasing the not-to-receive contract amounts and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract amendment to the existing agreements with True North, Wayne Veritas, O'Brien Code Consulting, and West Coast Code Consulting for building plan check and inspection service and include the desk item regarding the language of the resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion by Vice Mayor Landry, second by Councilmember Fratato to approve the staff recommendation, including the desk item. May I have a roll call? Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Councilmember Scazzola.
Aye.
Councilmember Fratato.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Aye.
Mayor Bybee.
Aye. And so that takes us to our last item on the agenda, which is council committee reports. Would you like to start?
Councilmember Fratato.
Thank you so much. I will start. I just wanted to kind of reiterate actually a couple of points I made before. With respect, first of all, to the West Valley Sanitation District, I'm pleased to report that the the district is in very good financial shape, very good management. The pension fund is fully paid for. The reserves, the future health obligations are fully paid for. So the district is very well managed. And the the good news that follows that is that with the current budget and funding and things of that nature, it is anticipated that there will be no rate increases asked for for four years. Wow. So, which is very good. I also tended the attended the, uh, recent meeting of the Silicon Valley Regional Interoperability Authority. And as I've reported before, that regional interoperability authority, uh, likewise is very well-run. Um, fortunately, uh, very efficient in what it does. And they have good, um, contracting and adequate funds to support, um, special contractors that go in and, uh, maintain and assess, uh, the microwave system to make sure that the communications are consistent and meet the obligations of all of the cities within, our fifteen cities within the county as well as county itself, of course, uh, for exclusive fire services. Also, there was a recent vacancy on the, uh, emergency operational, uh,
Area?
Area, uh, yes, uh, council, uh, EOAC and, uh, it's a city's association appointment and I applied for it and, uh, so I'm very pleased. I think it's a, a follow-on organization that what used to be the Emergency Preparedness Council many years ago, so. Very pleased with that.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Yeah, unfortunately I was sick all last week and I missed two of my committee meetings, but I did have the opportunity to be on Zoom and watch Anna Schu's art competition. Uh, I, I, I was amazed at the high school kids and the quality of art. Uh, the winners get to have their artwork displayed in the House of Representatives down the hallways. And I thought that was really great. I, I, I told you guys, I'm now the president of the Lock Jet Library JPA. That was a meeting I missed and I'm in a meeting with Jennifer next week to talk about the next upcoming year.
Councilmember Scazola?
Yeah, so a few things. Uh, first of all, uh, SVCE, so, um, they've had this really wonderful website, actually award-winning website called E-Hub. It's helping people learn how to be more energy efficient, how to take advantage of rebates for going electric. So I encourage people to take a look at that. ETA Policy Advisor Committee, uh, we had a very vigorous discussion on the visionary plan for the future of public transit throughout Santa, Santa Clara County. Uh, I specifically brought up, uh, the fact that there are unfortunately a lot of people that they, they're reluctant to take public transit because of fear of their safety. So, uh, that is a concern of ETA and they are always trying to address that. And I'm actually, uh, pretty excited, uh, our old Campbell guy, Evan Low introduced something where it's supposed to help with this specifically, uh, I hope I have the right thing. I think it's AB seventeen thirty-five, but it's, it's supposed to prevent people who have, uh, repeated offenses from being able to ride on, uh, VTA. And so if, to implement that, that's going to be the difficult part, but I'm very excited about the, the future of making public transit much more safe and more appealing to the average person. Uh, and I also went, uh, Supervisor Semidian hosted in Mountain View, uh, uh, it was the Asian American Pacific Islander event. As you know, this month celebrates their heritage and it was a really nice event. Dan was there as well. Um, and, uh, great performances, uh, in a reminder of just, uh, in recent times, unfortunately, we've had a lot of Asian hate, like resurgence, if you will. And, and so organizations out there like API are, are fighting the good fight, making sure that, you know, the world's a better place. Uh, and so it was, it was really great. Uh, oh, and it had a really fantastic meal afterwards. I stuck around long enough. I got some of that good food. It was great. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez?
Well, congratulations first off to, uh, Susan and Dan for the new roles. Uh, very, very exciting and glad to see us continue to be well represented. Um, I had several meetings each, um, for VTA in the, um, Air District. Um, so I, I won't go over all of them, but one of them that actually, um, brought some of that together was that we were, uh, for the Air District, one of the, um, committees I sit on, we were, um, considering changing the requirements, um, for eligibility for grant funding and, and, um, I advocated against that. And the reason being that, um, some of that funding goes, um, currently to, to fund, um, one of our lines in particular, um, on VTA and, um, COVID having impacted, uh, many, uh, many transit agencies, ironically has made it more difficult for those agencies to get funding because their numbers are down. So that's harder for them to get the numbers back up if, if the funding's being threatened. Um, so, um, we, we gave them more flexibility and, and more, uh, time before, uh, be- before making that change. And we'll evaluate that in the future. Um, and, uh, really excited to hear the, about the visionary transit plan going through, um, through the committees and, and I'll be very excited to, um, get to that, uh, next month, uh, on the board. Also mentioned, we had a great meeting of the legislative subcommittee. So, um, really appreciate the great discussion partnership there and, uh, really, uh, was grateful to, to have staff from both, um, Senator Cortezzi's office um, and our new assembly member, Mark Berman, um, who, uh, which was actually his first time or his office's first time joining those meetings. But it's always helpful to hear their priorities and feedback to inform our discussion. Um, and, um, we had some good discussion. Maybe I'll let you say more about the letter that, that, that we sent, but, um, I really appreciate, um, all your staff's work on that.
Thank you, um, Sergio. I attended the, uh, Santa Clara Cities Association, a couple of meetings of the Cities Association. One was the selection committee in which Dan was appointed. So congratulations, Dan. And the board meeting, uh, there were two, two presentations done. One was, um, from the Public Health Department of the county and they reported on their healthy cities dashboard and they're in the process of updating that. And some of the information seemed, um, dated. It, I, I know we've got some policies and initiatives that are, that are, um, in progress that really probably should be better reflected on their dashboard. So we might want to take a look at that. And then there was also a presentation by the district attorney's office, um, on the county gun violence prevention task force. And their ask was of each city to have um, an officer from our respective departments, uh, serve on that task force. So I know that's a budgetary concern, but hopefully that will be addressed or is in the, is in progress. And then the last, uh, item is the legislative subcommittee, which I attended with, with Sergio. And we did agree to, um, issue a letter of opposition on, um, AB seven forty-two, uh, law enforcement, police canines. And, uh, we, we submitted a very strong letter with some data to support, um, why, why Campbell would be, uh, supporting or opposing the legislation based on our history with, um, the K, our Canon, our Canon K-nine program and how effective it is and its, uh, effective tool in addressing, um, crime, um, without having to use, uh, uh, alternative ways of addressing crime without having to use lethal force. So, um, hopefully the letter might have some impact. And that's it. Um, anything else to add, Sergio, on that? Does that cover it?